College meeting of the Person County Board of County Commissioners to order. I'd like to ask Commissioner Powell, if you'd say it.
Would you pray for us, please? Heavenly Father and Almighty God, coming before you today recognizing your might and your power, and we plead for your presence in this meeting today. Guide our thoughts, guide our deeds, and may it be in the best interest of this county, everything that we do. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Perry, if you'd like.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any discussions or adjustments of the agenda, of which I have one? I'll start out. We're going to add a resolution and contingent fee to finalizing the opioid litigation, and that'll be with Ron Akaki. So if it's okay, we'll add it as item number five. Is there any other adjustments?
Move for approval.
All right. Got a motion on the table to approve the agenda with the adding of item number five. Is there any further discussion? Here none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Resolution of appreciation, Stella Williams.
Come on up. Price is Right.
Resolution of appreciation, whereas Stella Williams has served the people of Person County during her tenure as a community social service assistant at the Department of Social Services, and whereas Stella Williams has served the citizens of Person County with honor, integrity, sincerity, and dedication providing accurate and concise service for 25 years, January 1992 through November of 2017, and whereas Stella Williams has earned the respect and admiration of all who have known her and worked with her throughout her career, and whereas the county of Person recognizes the many contributions Stella Williams has made to the county and offers her sincere best wishes for her retirement. Now I therefore, Tracy L. Kendrick, Chairman of the Person County Board of Commissioners, do hereby extend this resolution of appreciation to Stella Williams for continually striving to make Roxborough and Person County a better place to live and work, adopted this day, the 22nd day of November, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
If you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
To the commissioners, to everyone here. I just want to say I thank everyone for my attendance here, my work here. When I first came here, it was very, very, very different, maybe I should say. But now I just thank God for letting me be here those 25 years and to serve each and everyone of Person County. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we have an informal comment period, and it looks like we have one speaker, so we've set aside 10 minutes. Mr. David Newell, if you'll address the podium and give your name and address, please.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is David Newell. I reside at 256 Newell Drive. I come before you today to ask for your help in one respect. As you have asked me to be on the Board of Economic Development, and that board has asked me to be chairman. Now, I come to you this morning as an individual, but as you all know, we have some things that are finally coming into place very shortly. And the thing that I would like to ask you to consider today is that we extend a voting privilege to the city of Roxborough. If we could tweak our arrangement, whatever you call it, referendum or whatever. My main goal here is to be as unified as possible going forward. After we make a few announcements, I plan to get as active a committee as possible and go hard sell some assets that we have in this county that are now coming to a marketable state. And so, looking at the people that we compete against, the one thing that they all have in common, especially our main competitor in one area, is that they have their people aligned all the way from Washington down to the local people, pulling in the same direction. And if we're going to compete, we need to do the same thing. If, you know, it's not something that we'll make a deal, but if we give the perception that we can't get along, it'll sure break a deal. So, one thing that I would ask also of this board is, another thing that industries coming in here look at very strongly is how many three to two votes we have. If we can't get along amongst ourselves, why would they want to come here? So, you know, the EDC is basically selling, and as you know, selling is basically perception. So, we've got to give them some reason to come here. So, I ask for your consideration, and I thank you for your time.
Item number two, discussion and adjustment of the consent agenda. Is there any adjustments of the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
I have a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Here none. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, ayes have it. New business. Item number three, resolution regarding K3 class size reduction implementation by Person County Commissioners, Commissioner Clayton.
Well, I added this at the request of North Carolina Association for one reason. For another reason was is class sizes, you've probably been reading about in the paper that was sent by the legislature, fixed the cost. The county did a lot of money. One of the reasons it's going to cost you a lot of money, the legislature said to reduce the class size, but they didn't put enough money out there to pay for the teachers to cover it. So, it's been a big deal, I think. Commissioner Powell's probably been dealing with this quite a while, but I felt like it was something that we needed to address, and had to do quite a bit of work. We had a, I call it a sample type resolution. She went down and talked with the people with the Board of Education, and she may want to add something to what they told her, but the North Carolina General Assembly in general has always, no matter who's in charge over there, pushed costs down to the local government. And this is just another example of it, that we end up, they'll tell you they cutting stuff over there, but some of the stuff they cut, they still want to do, so they push it down for the locals to pay for. And this is just one example of that. And we're hoping this resolution will urge them to go ahead in their special session in March and fix this problem, and the state cover the cost if they're going to keep the class sizes at size, or either work out something where they're going to do that over a period of time. But there is a movement, I saw in the news this week, of two of the representatives in Wake County to have the legislature try to get this straightened out in March. Now, whether they'll do that or not, but I think if nobody says anything, they won't do anything. So, I think it's time for us to make some type of statement, and that's what this is all about, is trying to get them to fix the problem. But I don't think they intentionally created this problem in the beginning, but it created a big problem cost-wise. Ms. York, do you have anything you want to add after talking to the school superintendent?
I would just point out in the resolution, and right in about the center is where they revealed some numbers and unmet needs that they have due to these new changes. So, they're estimating an additional $500,000 in capital above and beyond what we're already planning for and on our radar screen. Fifteen new teachers in the upcoming budget request, and then an additional four classrooms needing to be built to accommodate these needs. So, that gives you somewhat of a preview of, you know, some of the needs that they're going to be asking for, for additional funding. And of course, we prefer that the state take care of their responsibilities and not pass this on to the county at the local level.
I agree with both of you guys. Part of our state legislature's rules and general statute states that they need to pay for salary and benefits of the employees within the school system, and I think passing this down to each individual county does put an undue burden on the people of Person County. So, whereas we try to do the best that we can for the education and security of our citizens, sometimes you have to push back a little bit. So, thank you for bringing this up, and thank you for doing the research on it. Mr. Powell.
Yeah, as Jimmy said, I do have a history there, and I would probably think, don't get me started on this, because this is probably 14 years that I've been directly involved with school funding, and a lot of decisions made in Raleigh do have unintended consequences, and big time for a local level, and especially smaller counties that don't have the resources that the large ones does. And you see what Ms. York has mentioned here in a way of it probably requested funding in comparison, Wake County, $28 million is what they wanted, so, you know, it's still about the same. Now, the Senate said back months ago that there was money in the proposal to pay for these additional teachers. Well, that, they finally did have to say that's not true, and it's not. There's no proposal there to pay for them. I'll say too that class size does matter. Having been there, done that, I know that. You ask any teacher the difference in 16 students and 22 or 24 students, and someday one makes a difference, depending on who that one is and what their intent is. So, they can disrupt, but there's a huge difference, and there is a large difference in the outcome of teaching even every day, each and every day, when it comes to class size. So, it's extremely important. I don't, I mean, I like that concept, but they need to put the money where their mouth is. They have made this decision and seemingly not retracting on that or extending it for some additional time, but they need to listen to the needs of the locals as we are here. So, communicating with not only our two representatives, but the entire education committee, I think would be very important for each of us individually as board members, and support this resolution that we do get the funding that we need in Person County to accommodate a smaller class size. I'm 100% for that. Should be done, but, and even at that, if we were to get some additional funding, this thing won't happen overnight. They don't get it, what it takes to run a school district even as small as Person County. It would not turn that ship around overnight. So, we need to communicate with them, let them know where we stand.
What does it do for TA's since the ratio will be lower with classroom size? Are they still required to have a TA on that?
Those standards would stay from what I'm reading. Yeah, that's still there. But then again, locals may have to make some concessions there, may have to eliminate some positions. The other route would be the elimination of some classes like physical education. I mean, you can't have both with what they proposed. So, elimination of some classes or programs would be a real possibility right in Person County.
I move that we pass it, and if it passes, send a copy to our House representative as well as our Senate.
We have a motion on the table to approve the resolution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Item number four, juvenile crime prevention council appointment. Ms. Reeves.
Good morning. I'd like to inform the board that due to his upcoming retirement, Chief District Court Judge Mark Galloway has resigned his position representing on the Person County's Juvenile Crime Prevention Council on December 18th, 2017, and has recommended District Court Judge John Stoltz III to be appointed as his replacement until such time the new chief judge is named. So, I would like to ask the board to consider appointment of the District Court Judge John Stoltz III to represent in the chief court judge position on the JCPC, to either represent for the unexpired term of Mr. Galloway's, which is the unexpired term to December 31st of this year, 2018, or you may appoint him for a full two-year term, which would be a full-term ticket, with the condition that once a new chief judge is named by the state, that then that person would assume the appointment.
Would you approve the applicant for a two-year term?
We have a motion on the table to approve the applicant for a two-year, full two-year term. Is there any further discussion? Here no discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, just want to add, I heard that Judge Galloway had a very bad fall, and to please keep him in your prayers.
Thank you, Cam. Item number five, resolution and contingent fee agreement to finalize the opioid litigation authority. Mr. Akak.
Mr. Chairman and Board, at your November 20th meeting, you made the policy decision to authorize the expiration and the filing of a lawsuit if necessary against manufacturers and distributors of opioids. It was an acknowledgement of the crisis nationwide in the state and this county. We have now received the formal documents to authorize the engagement of the outside counsel, as well as a resolution which states in a resolution form, which you approved in policy form in November, stating in fact that there is a crisis here and that action should be taken. You have the four-year, the resolution and the contingent fee agreement with the law firms, it's a consortium of law firms, which involves national and local, state and local attorneys to bring forth the lawsuit. We just received word on Friday that the national lawsuit is moving forward, and in fact, the judge, a federal court judge, has called the parties together for a meeting on January 31st, and the judge hopes to get a settlement agreement. If not, he wants to go to trial as soon as possible. So, the forms before you are just formalizing what you have already authorized, and I would recommend to you that you adopt both the resolution and the authority to engage outside counsel. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Just want to make clear to the audience and people watching that the resolution is a standard resolution that we typically do, talking about the different issues that we have related to the case involved. And just so the public knows, it specifies that a 25% contingent fee be provided in the event that the county be required to expend monies for litigation, and that we would be responsible for any part of the expenses of 25% fee from county funds.
Mr. Chairman, if I may to add to what you're saying, the resolution as it was presented to, the contingent fee agreement as it was presented to us, we were able to get it changed sufficiently to make it clear that there would under no events be any out-of-pocket expenses from Person County. All expenses associated with the lawsuit would be paid and absorbed by the law firm. There would be no cost to the county, and if there is a settlement which results in some compensation to the county which does not involve monetary compensation, that the contingent fee would not be paid on that non-monetary amount. Clearly, we wanted to make clear that there is no financial risk at all to Person County. Thank you for pointing that out.
All right. Thank you for the clarity. Here in the resolution and the contingent fee agreement, is there any further discussion?
Move for approval.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table to approve the resolution and a contingent fee. Is there any further discussion? Here none. All in favor of the resolution and contingent fee, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Chairman's report.
Mr. Chairman, we didn't need to do those separate, do we?
One motion will suffice.
Okay. This one will be sure. Thank you.
All right, thanks. The only thing that I'd like to share is, I'd like to say that I appreciate everybody in the county. I've been watching social media and looking at the newspaper and getting a lot of comments and concerns from our community about the funding for the volunteer fire departments. It's really helpful to us five guys up here in front to hear from people within the community, your discussions, your ideas, and your thoughts on all of those things. So, I just wanted to say that it does my heart well to see that you guys are engaged, that you're doing things, because a lot of issues come through the county that nobody ever speaks up about. You may hear it at the country store, or you may hear it at the hunting club, or something like that, but we don't hear a lot of issues that come along. So, I want to thank the community and all of the people for getting involved and putting their ideas and their perspective out there for all of us to hear. So, thank you. Ms. York.
A couple of announcements. The next time that we'll meet will be the board retreat on the 5th. We're planning a half-day retreat this year, so we'll start around 8:30, and we hope to finish by 2 o'clock out at the Holina Satellite Safety Conference Room. There is a PCBIC meeting tomorrow, 2 o'clock, at PCC S-100, and then they're also having a full-day goal-setting retreat on Friday, the 26th, from 9 to 4. Just wanted to make you aware of both of those. That's all I had. Chairman.
Question on the request that came from David Newell about adding a city vote member. Could we do that at the retreat, or could we do that tomorrow since we have an announced meeting, or what? When's the next time that we could officially approve a city representative?
I believe you could do that anytime, today, tomorrow, as long as there's a majority of board members present.
Head to the next meeting.
Tomorrow? Oh, the next, when? When do y'all meet again? I mean, I know we have tomorrow, but when would be the next regular schedule?
February 5th.
For the EDC board? When do they normally meet?
They normally meet at the...
They just met.
The Thursday, the Tuesday, the third Tuesday of each month.
So, we get it on the 5th. That allows them to have that person in place for their next meeting?
Right. Their next meeting then would be the 20th of February.
I'll make a request that we put it on that meeting.
I believe.
You got that, Brenda?
Please. That's all I have.
Okay. I think it's the 27th. I'm sorry. My calendar says the 27th is their next meeting.
They canceled the regular one tomorrow.
Okay.
So, it's being rescheduled.
Commissioner Clayton.
I want to thank everybody, this board for supporting the class size resolution for one thing, and number two is, this is not the first thing that we've had that costs Person County money that's come from Raleigh in the last year or so. And I've made my comments to Representative Yarborough on several issues, and one of them is House Bill 56. It had a laundry list of things that affected the county, and it's somewhere down the road that's going to cost us money. And when they get to Raleigh, sometimes they forget where they came from. This is not a big urban county. We're a small rural county, even though we join a big urban county, or two big urban counties, but they need to keep in mind that some of the leadership over there looks at what's going on, and they coerce representatives like Representative Yarborough sometimes to support things that really are not in our benefit. And I just want to be sure, I'm saying this publicly because I want him to be reminded of that, that, and that class size thing was something that may have slipped through, but some of that stuff in House Bill 56 didn't. You had a coalition over there that almost stopped the override of that veto of House Bill 56, and there were Republicans and Democrats too. You had a Democrat from Vance County and a Republican from Henderson County that both got up, that were former commissioners, and argued that that bill was bad for local government. And you don't get people on each end of the spectrum getting up doing that unless they really feel like that it's true because they have been commissioners. And so many of them in the legislature have never served as a county commissioner or city councilman either one. So, I just want to point that out, that when you see these representatives, even if you know some that are not from Person County, and I'm sure you do, you go into these things like that Cardinal board that Gordon's on, and there are different things that y'all go to, you see representatives from other districts, give them your opinion. It won't hurt. If it doesn't help, at least it won't hurt.
Commissioner Perry.
Just a reminder, we have the chamber banquet on Thursday night. Are we going to need to have a call and meeting for that as well?
No.
Okay.
I want me to, I got a cog meeting.
Mr. Powell.
Yeah, yeah, maybe. Maybe I won't take a lot of time here in a sense, but on our desk here today, where is some copies of letters from our volunteer fire departments indicating their plans in the coming budget year. And I think there's probably a couple of thoughts here that would be important and good for the public to understand related to unmandated local funding of county departments, and in this case, and what I'm talking about is volunteer fire departments. I think there's somewhat of a misconception along those lines about two different issues. We're hearing a lot of comparison of a designated fire tax, that's the word that I'm hearing a lot, for the county compared to what we have worked on a little, call a sales tax, designated to funding VFDs, and it's been kicked around back and forth. And I do think there's a little misconception or perception of that. And we have the attorney here, and he can certainly either... And we have the attorney here, and he can certainly either agree or disagree, or tell me that I'm totally wrong, and that's okay. So, what I'm about to say and what I'm thinking is that I'm not taking sides with either of those, a fire tax district or a designated sales tax. We need to have a complete and a better understanding of the two. And all should understand that a designated tax for a fire district to fund VFDs or a designated sales tax for VFD funding could change every year. Funding could be maintained, increased, reduced, or eliminated by county officials during any given budget process. In either case, funds are budgeted and levied each year by the county. There's no state mandate for funding VFDs. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney? Just an example of what we're talking about. If the county were to levy, I'll just say a 4% tax in the upcoming budget session, that tax could be maintained, increased, reduced to zero at the next budget session. So, it's not an absolute, and I don't think people understand that. Again, I'm not taking sides for either, but understand that a designated fire tax, or in our case, we have talked about a resolution for a sales tax that would go to funding volunteer fire departments. They both fall under the same umbrella of yearly levies and approval by the budget sessions of this county board. So, there is no difference there. So, I think there's a big, big misunderstanding in the public on that. So, again, either or, if we chose either one, is a yearly process and could be, again, increased, decreased, deleted, because there's no mandate for it. And I continue to communicate with people, and I will. I don't mind sitting down. I think there's, that's part of the process that we go through, should go through, and take all points into consideration, and we've got two proposals on the table currently, one by the VFDs, the other by Assistant County Manager. So, those are the two things that are on the table for consideration. I made a comment that it, it currently I favor the county proposal. However, there are some parts of that that I don't like, but we just haven't gotten to the point of talking about that yet. So, I'm not taking sides with either one. I just think that it would do the public well to understand the point, that a designated fire tax or a sales tax for volunteer fire departments are one and same when it comes to longevity of being installed. And I just, I hope people get a better message about that. Again, not taking sides, just want the public to have a clear understanding. Okay? Thank you. I'm sorry. I took so long.
No, I'm glad we got the clarity on that. Thank you for sharing it. At this time, entertain a motion to go into closed session per General Statute 143-318.1185 to establish or to instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract and proposed contract for the real, for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease, or the amount of compensation or other material terms of the employment contract or proposed employment contract with the following individuals permitted to attend: County Manager Heidi York, Clerk to the Board Brenda Reeves, County Attorney Ron Acoff, Assistant County Manager Sybil Tate, IT Director Chris Peryear, and 911 Communications Manager Brett Rien. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So may.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Any discussion?
Can I have about two minutes, we can run downstairs and get settled?
Certainly. So, within, let's say you'd be good with 20 till, that'll give you seven minutes.
Yeah, I'm pretty fast.
All right. Until Ray gets back, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed?